Start in about a minute. If anyone has a citizen's comment, the box is right up here on the front table. It is gray. You could put that in before the meeting starts.
People rushing up to do that. She's got her hair all done. It's nice.
It's three minutes history, Mom. You're having a great time.
Thanks. It's been a day.
Everybody's been saying that.
I had a nail in my tire. I got a flat on the way here.
Oh.
I have a nail in my tire and nobody can take me. It's in the back.
Oh, no. Right here, Main Street. March, that Fire or whatever, Goodyear.
Really?
Yeah, right there on Main Street. Don is his name. He's the manager.
Just tell me no dobby.
Where the asphalt meets my dirt road.
I've called like five places.
No, he got me in today. Finished, fixed it, and I got it.
That's a flat. When are you taking it home?
Yeah, yeah. Don't worry about it. I'll walk you out. Because, yeah, I've been there with.
Man, I hear you.
You're like, oh, it's a firestone dealer, right? Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was Goodyear.
Oh, Goodyear, yeah. It is Goodyear. Right here on Wing, well, your window main. It's right there on the lawn.
Lawrence here, though.
It's across where I used to get my hair cut. Yeah, Don is his name, is the manager. Thank you.
Oh, nice.
The guys would yell at each other sometimes. Quite entertaining.
That's awesome.
Lawrence here, though.
So, that would probably be one of Joe's teachers.
Wait, Mr. Brandon. He's enjoying himself.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I am Patty McQuaid. I'd like to thank everybody for being here on this lovely evening. I'm going to have the board members, starting on my right, introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anupam Soodoo. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening and happy Tuesday. Welcome, and I'm so glad you're here.
Oh, I'm LaRonda Chastain. Forgot to say who I am, everybody. Hey, I'm LaRonda Chastain. So, nice to be here with you tonight.
And Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Yes, good evening. Monica Merritt, welcome to our meeting this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing Ms. Diane Robertson and thank her for being here to take our minutes. She is a lovely assistant and really keeps me focused every day. I'd like to ask the remaining members of our staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piazza, the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Liz Vartanian, Human Resources.
All right, we can stand and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are on to letter A, adoption of agenda and approval of the consent agenda. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve, adopt the agenda and approve of consent agenda, action item 220353.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Soodoo that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item 220353. Would you like to take us through it, Superintendent Merritt?
Thank you, President McQuaid. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, my heart is filled as I look out in this audience and see all of these champions that are choosing us to continue their career in education and here to support our students in every aspect of our organization. So, you'll have consideration for hire this evening. We also have leaves and resignations, the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on February the 22nd and the special meeting on February 23rd. Also this evening, we have the final, the first reading of the following policies. Policy 2260, non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunity. Policy 3122-4122, non-discrimination and equal educational opportunity. Policy 2260.01, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. And policy 3123-4123, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination in employment. All of these are first readings.
All right, thank you very much. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion passes. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
Thank you, President McQuaid. This evening, I am going to introduce you to a new group of employees in our district and wait till you hear about all of the experiences that they will be bringing to Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Also, you are going to meet again some of our current employees who will be taking on some new positions in our district. So, when I call your name, if you could come up, please. Kathryn Carr. Kathryn is, well, she's already started. So, she is Salem High School math teacher, and she comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University. So, welcome Kathryn. Next, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Moses Hubert Jr. Mr. Moses Hubert, Hubert Jr. is the Student Success Specialist at Hossing Elementary School. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Olivet College. He has served in the following roles: substitute teacher, mentor at Henry Ford Academy for Creative Studies, youth specialist at Detroit Behavior Institute, and an elementary student support specialist in the Hamtramck Public School District. Welcome. Mr. Pierre Rice Jr. Mr. Rice is the new Student Success Specialist at Workman Elementary School. And all three of them have already started work, and they all still look great, so this is all good news. Mr. Rice has a bachelor's degree in history at the University of Michigan and another bachelor's degree in science in social studies at EMU. He has a master's degree in school counseling from EMU. He has served in the following roles: substitute teacher, site coordinator at Eastern Michigan University for 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and a school counselor at Washtenaw International Middle School. Welcome. Ms. Kelly Steiman. So, Kelly is our new Student Success Specialist at Erickson Elementary School. She comes to us with a bachelor's of science degree in elementary education. She has been an elementary teacher, a project manager for applied learning, and she has provided academic support and programming for middle school students at Jamestown Community College. Welcome. Ms. Cara Thompson. Cara currently is a teacher at Hoben Elementary School, but at the end of the school year, she will then move to be a Student Success Specialist at Field Elementary School. She comes with us with a Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education, a master's degree in leadership, and she has been teaching since 2016. Congratulations, Cara. Ms. Vanessa Titus. Ms. Titus is going to be the new Student Support Coordinator at Tonda Elementary School. She comes to us with a Bachelor's in Elementary Education, a master's degree in literacy education. She's been an elementary teacher for over five years and a school dean for over 11 years. Welcome, Vanessa. Ms. Julie O'Hara. Julie currently teaches 5th grade at Erickson Elementary School. She is now going to be the Student Support Coordinator at Bentley Elementary School. She will start at the end of the school year. She has a bachelor's degree from Grand Valley State University, a master's degree in educational management. She has served as an elementary teacher, an EL coach, an instructional specialist, and an assistant principal. Welcome, Julie. Ms. Jessica Kaller. Okay, Jessica's first day was today here at the board office. And she told me on the way out, she's coming back, so this is all good. Jessica is going to be working as our accounting specialist in payroll. She works in Ms. Piazza's department. And you're a graduate of our district, right? I remember you told, yeah, she told me that on, that's right. So, we'll look at yearbooks tomorrow, okay? So, anyways, she's going to be an accounting specialist in payroll at the E.J. McClendon Educational Center. She has, guy has a degree from Dorsey Business School in medical billing and coding. She currently attends Washtenaw Community College, and she's working on a degree in business administration. She's also served in the following positions: administrative assistant, credentialing assistant, credential coordinator, and an office manager. Welcome. Ms. Shannon Way. Shannon currently works in our district. She's the media specialist at Bentley School. Come on in. Come on up. So, anyways, Shannon's going to finish out the year, too, because we care so much about all these kids that our current educators are with. We said, please stay with your current kids and then move in your new position at the end of the school year. But Shannon comes to us with a Bachelor's of Arts from St. Louis University, a master's in elementary education at the University of Michigan. She's a content area teacher. That's where she started her career, and then she's been a media specialist for over eight years. And she is the new Technology Integration Specialist, working in Mark Salzer's department. Welcome, Shannon. So, this is very, very exciting, and I want to, I have to thank Ms. Maureen Malloy because the amount of interviewing that her and her team has been involved in to make sure we have champions for our elementary students is just, thank you. Thank you so much. So, congratulations to all of you. Maureen's going to help me, and we're going to give you our candy bar. And all of you working, you have to come to work tomorrow, so. Here, Kathryn.
You're going to choose those? Okay. Because she's not going to do it herself. Let's pretend that didn't happen.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'm ready to pop out of my chair, but Liz Vartanian Gibbs has told me to remain calm. But I'm sorry, Liz, tonight, I'm not going to remain calm because I am so pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Vartanian Gibbs as our new Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Engagement. When we think about this Office of Student and Family Engagement, this is the reality of a vision that we've been talking about in terms of a need for our students. When we look at the pillars of our dynamic plan, thinking about becoming a student-centered community, making sure that we're honoring student voice, making sure that we're engaging our students, our families. When we think about our students, our families, our parents, our stakeholders, people in our community that really come together to support our students, the vision of this office is really about making sure that we bring all of those community's resources together and wrap around the support to really ensure that our students are successful. And I could not think of a better leader to lead this work for our students, which you hear from Liz at all times, as a student-focused leader. And from kids growing up, my own kids, if they're outside playing basketball, they're like, oh, yeah, Dr. V G, because everybody either came through Hoben. Liz has been in our district as a student. She's been a teacher. She's been a building administrator, a curriculum coordinator, here in central office as an Assistant Superintendent of HR, and it is just so appropriate now that she will continue to lead this work on behalf of our students. So, Liz, I'm excited. We have this announcement early. She's already just been up every single night, working on what this vision will look like and bringing it to a reality for our families. So, really looking forward. When I think about PCCS, Plymouth Canton Community Schools, looking at putting that community aspect, really in a purposeful way, what does it look like to support our students and our families? So, Liz, welcome, and I'm excited about what we're going to do together on behalf of kids.
So, thank you, Superintendent Merritt. I have a few words I would like to share with all of you. So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Engagement. The Office of Student and Family Engagement will implement a plan to collaborate with families to create a culture of learning and embrace the individuality and uniqueness of families. Services will be provided which support the overall well-being of our students and their families. According to Dr. Karen Mapp from Harvard University, family engagement is a full, equal, and equitable partnership among families, educators, and community partners to promote children's learning and development from birth through college and career. The department will be aligned to the vision of Dr. Mapp, as well as the five family engagement principles from the Michigan Department of Education. Partnerships will be enhanced and formed with organizations such as the Salvation Army, Growth Works, Jack and Jill of America, Giving Hope, to just name a few, to provide our families additional services. Innovative opportunities such as one-on-one mentoring for students and community programming will be part of this office. It is well-known that research shows the significant positive effect family engagement can and does have on student achievement, and this effect is consistent among student demographic groups. My passion for children, their growth, and our community will be integrated into the work we do each day in the department. I'm very excited for this opportunity, and thank you for believing in me.
Yes, where's your candy bar? Where's your candy bar?
I don't have enough candy bars. I got enough candy bars. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and welcome to all the new hires. We're very excited about this. Student support coordinators are going to be excellent, really helping all of our students and families. So, welcome to the district, and thank you for choosing us. We are on to B, which is celebrating success, and it is, Member Chastain.
I am so excited.
This is one of our best parts of the evening. We love this.
It is, and so, for all those who are exiting, I know it's been a long day, but it is such a privilege and an honor to be able to share in this and be the sort of spokesperson for tonight's celebrating success. So excited. So, tonight, we are honoring Canton High School student Dylan Flowers. Dylan is an exemplary student with an attitude that radiates positivity to everyone around him. In addition to the two staff who nominated Dylan, there were actually 13 other people who took time to submit accolades that made it more clear that Dylan is deserving of this recognition. The comments, and I'm going to share a few. I know I only got a little bit of time on the, on the agenda, but I'm going to share a few because he's worth celebrating. The comments submitted by staff members explain how thoughtful and caring he is towards his teachers, his peers, always contributing thoughtfully during class discussions, has excellent character and integrity, and that he is an all-around absolute pleasure to have in class. So, congratulations, Mom. PCCS is proud to honor and to have an enthusiastic learner like Dylan Flowers as a part of our district. But before I go any further, I must share some of the things that were said about Dylan. And I could actually read all of it, but I didn't, so I'm just going to highlight a few things. So, one of the recommenders said, he leads those around him by example. They say he's an enthusiastic participant, a phenomenal student. Even in the virtual setting last year, many teachers talked about how he showed up every day, turned on his camera, was dressed and engaged every day during Virtual Academy. I can tell you, having a kid in Virtual Academy, that was not Miles's story. And you know Miles. So, I, just for transparency, I happen to know the Flowers family, and I'm so delighted just to be able to offer that. This was completely random. We didn't know. I was chosen to do it tonight, and I consider it such an honor to offer this. Just a few more words about Dylan. It says that Dylan is a real gem. And they actually offered, one of the teachers offered an example that I think is worth sharing. The teacher said, one example of just how diligent Dylan is and just his contribution to the classes, that Dylan actually created a children's book, and the book helps to prepare kids for the arrival of a sibling. He did the text, the illustration, he did the whole thing, right? And so, when I think about the type of student we want in our district, that we want in our classrooms, you're an example to that. And so, I am so honored to have known you and that you have grown up in this district, and I am positive that you and your family will continue to do great things. And so, it is my honor and privilege to share this or to offer this award to you. But before I do, I'd like to invite Lauren Cummings to the podium to share more about how Dylan is contributing to the positive learning environment at PISA.
Well, thank you. Absolutely. Yeah, well, good evening, everybody. Yeah, Bill and I, Bill Keith, you know, who I team Fundamentals of Radio with, he wasn't able to be here this evening. But at the end of the semester, we had Dylan in our Fundamentals of Radio class, and Bill and I just looked at each other, and we just said, you know what? Dylan was just such an amazing student. He was so kind in his academic work from beginning to end of the semester. It was just amazing. He was always very gracious to his classmates. He would work in teams, pairs, individually. He just always, you know, produced fabulous work, and was always very, you know, gracious with working with his peers. So, I said to Bill, I said, look, we should nominate, you know, Dylan for something here, and he should be recognized. So, welcome, and congratulations, Dylan. So, come on up.
So, Dylan, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to present Dylan Flowers the Stars Award for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. So, congratulations, Dylan. Would you like to say a few words before I give you your certificate?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Of course you do.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. It's been an honor to be a part of PCCS co-chiefs. I want to say thank you to my mom. My dad's not able to be here right now, but I want to thank my dad. They raised me into the young man I am today. I want to thank my older brother for setting a amazing role model, being an amazing role model for me, growing up. I just want to say that the teachers, all the faculty members are part of Plymouth Canton Community Schools are so respectable. They make it a place where you are able to learn but feel safe at the same time. I know this has been unprecedented times that we've been faced with through these past few years, but throughout all of that, I have not stopped to continue to thrive because of just the environment, the teachers, peers, everything. I want to thank Superintendent Monica Merritt for always, you know, just being a very positive leader and person. Every time I see an email from you, I smile. So, I just want to thank you and everybody else. I know I might not know all of you, but I just really appreciate every last one of you for the contribution to this amazing team. And although my journey here is almost done, I'm just so happy that I was able to be a part of it, and I'm not going to stop coming. I'm going to come visit, and I'm going to be a part of this amazing team. So, I just want to thank every last one of you, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm truly blessed. I just want to thank God for this. Speechless, thank you. Thank you. It means a lot.
Thank you so much, young man.
Thank you.
Wow, awesome.
Man. Dylan, hold on. We can't do a photo.
Hold on. Okay. Dylan, do you have your book published?
Not yet. I'm working on it.
Okay, let us know. We'd love a copy.
Keep us posted.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. That is a great start to our evening right there because this is really why we're here.
Why we're here.
It just makes you feel good, doesn't it?
Yes.
It does. I'm like a meeting adjourned.
We're going on home now.
All right, so now we are on to C, Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. So, we will be having a special meeting at the end of this meeting. It's on board governance. It will be right after this. Anybody is welcome to stay. It will, however, as usual with special meetings, not be taped, but this is going to be after the meeting. On March 15th, which is a week from tonight, we are going to have a board governance workshop with Karen Cross to continue our work. March 16th will be a community forum, and at the end of tonight's meeting, Members Soodoo will provide some additional information on that. The Wayne County Association of School Boards is hosting some MASB classes on March 24th and 31st in Lincoln Park. You're interested in that, and you didn't get the information, let me know. And also, we have been asked to appear as celebrity judges, and they're using the word celebrity very loosely, in the student art show, May 7th. So, you should have gotten an email about that. It's always an excellent day to see all of the student art. And I would also like to point out that a year ago, well, a year ago on Thursday, was the election where the community approved the bond that we are now using, no, two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, that we are using to do all these renovations to all these schools. So, it's very exciting to see all the work that's been done in those two years and all the work that's coming up. And so, some of that will also be presented tonight, and just want to take this opportunity to again, thank the community for their support for our students, which provides them with the education that they need to succeed later. Next up is Student Performance and Achievement with Ms. Soodoo.
Thank you, President McQuaid. We had a great meeting last week, Wednesday, right here in this room, and we went over the presentations and discussions for Biology and Honors Biology curriculum materials to create more hands-on collaborative opportunities for our students. It was exciting to hear what the team has planned for the new coursework to really make Biology, Honors Biology engaging and relevant to what's actually happening. So, thank you to the team for that work. We also looked at World Languages Curriculum Materials for Mandarin, as well as Word Study Curriculum Materials Recommendation for Grades K through 3. And toward the end, we did start a discussion around resources and programs needed to improve student achievement for all students. As you know, this is a really heavy topic and a really important one. We've been discussing it every board meeting, and there's a lot of work we need to do. So, the conversation has started. We will continue that conversation at future board meetings and future SPA meetings. And our next meeting is going to be here in this room on April 6th at 5:00 p.m. I encourage all of you to attend. Thank you.
The Policy Committee has not met. We meet on the second board meeting of the month. So, we will be meeting on March 22nd, which is in two weeks from tonight, at 5:30 down in the collaboration space. You take the hallway and continue to the back, that's where we'll be. So, everybody is welcome. And then Finance and Operations, Mr. Brooks.
Yeah, we met last Thursday and had our usual great meeting that we always have, and we learned a lot about the financing, finances, especially about the EL2 updates at Byrd, Miller, and Smith School, including playground equipment, furniture updates, and a few more items on there. So, our next meeting will be Thursday, March 17th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And now, we are up to Administrative Reports. Superintendent Merritt.
Thank you, President McQuaid. As we strive to be a student-focused and student-centered organization, I hope you will indulge me this evening to just brag on our wonderful students because I have a lot of good news to share. I want to start talking about our award-winning PCEP Culinary Programs Competition Teams. They continue their longstanding tradition of excellence recently when the program's two teams took home honors at the Pro Start Competition in Lansing. The competition is presented by the Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association's Educational Foundation, and they saw students compete for a variety of scholarships. This year's event was the first in-person edition of the state finals since before the COVID-19 pandemic, and our students showed up and showed out. Under the direction of Hospitality and Culinary Arts Instructor Diane Woodward, the PCEP Culinary Team took second place in the state in the closest event in the history of the competition, while the Management and Restaurant Design Team were crowned state champions in their division. The teams will now move on to the national competition in Washington, D.C. in May. So, congratulations to all of our students and Diane Woodward for her leadership, for their tremendous attention to detail and their commitment.
That's awesome.
That's right. So, let's keep bragging about our students in these state finals. Congratulations to Plymouth Canton Salem High School Deca Chapters, who continue the PCEP Program's tradition. PCEP Program's tradition of success recently when they competed virtually in their District Career Development Conference on January the 7th. The conference was an opportunity for business professionals to interact one-on-one with students whose business skills were evaluated by volunteer judges. PCEP contest entrants have all taken a year of marketing and are currently enrolled in advanced marketing where DECA is used as a leadership component. Nearly 60 students competed from the three schools' chapters with their many individual honors listed on the district website. Honored students will now advance to Michigan DECA State Career Development Conference in Detroit from March 10th through the 12th. That's this weekend coming up. Congratulations to our outstanding DECA program students once again for putting PCCS on the state maps. Let's brag a little bit about our robotics program. That's the gift that continues to give. Our students work so hard. This award-winning PCEP Lightning Robotics Program took a break from building championship-level robots that are at the root of the program's success recently when they teamed up to lead a donation drive to benefit local first-step shelters. The drive collected over 1,000 items ranging from laundry detergent to clothes, household items, to help Wayne County's first-step programs get needed supplies to individuals and families who are victims of domestic or sexual violence. We are so proud of our students' generosity and their commitment to serving the community, particularly in the midst of such a demanding season. So best of luck to our robotics team as they pursue another championship year, but we really just want to applaud them for their character and commitment to our community. It just speaks volumes. I'm not done yet, I'm still bragging. East students, they win the chess championship for the first time in its history. East Middle School has earned the state of Michigan's chess championship. And while that is impressive enough, they actually won the competition shorthanded. The Michigan School's state chess championship tournament involved teams of four students from middle schools across the state. On the night before the competition, one of East's team members unexpectedly had to withdraw from the tournament. But the remaining competitors, Dran Das, grade 8, Anthony Chin, grade 9, and Dranhi Das, grade 6, went on to post an undefeated 4.5 score in five games. This made up for the zero score received on the fourth board in each round for the missing player. Despite the adversity, these great players from East swept the remaining matches to take on the championship. Congratulations to all of the students and their families for this accomplishment. And finally, we have to applaud our own principal, Kim Villarosa. This is Salem High School principal. She has been nominated for the Principal of the Year by the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. PCCS is so honored to have such a dedicated, passionate, and caring staff member who goes above and beyond to do for her students, her staff, and the community. Now, when you look to this nomination, this nomination actually came from students. So the impact that she is making on our young people and their lives and their academic and educational success here at PCEP really speaks volumes to this nomination. So she will go forward and compete with eight other principals around the state, and we are wishing her the best of luck, but we are congratulating her for this well-deserved nomination. And we are so incredibly proud of Ms. Villarosa, but really just honored to have her leading one of our three high schools on our campus. Congratulations. And that is it. Unless you want me to keep bragging. I will always have more.
All right, so now we are at Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz.
Thank you. This evening, we have with us Derek Dinkaloo from TNP and Brian Gussman from McCarthy Smith. They're going to present the scope and bid award recommendation for EL2 buildings, Byrd, Smith, and Miller. They're going to also be up there and talk about the playground equipment with these three buildings as well, as well as the furniture packages for the Learning Commons and some office space in those buildings. So we're going to hear three presentations from them and there'll be first readings on these.
Thank you. Good evening. So Brian and I will tag-team a little bit here as we go through the three items. So just as a reminder before Brian goes over the numbers with you, so EL2 is additions and renovations at Byrd, Miller, and Smith Elementary. At Byrd, the addition is gymnasium and two classrooms connected to, in the back of the building. It also includes a new kitchen or renovation to the kitchen as well as, and these are similar projects to the EL1 project, so there's miscellaneous renovation throughout the building. And one of the big items is new LED lights throughout the building, and that's really across the board as we go through these projects. That addition, you know, is designed to match the existing vocabulary of the building with brick and glass. And then Miller Elementary School, so there's two additions at Miller Elementary Schools. At the front is the main office with a secure entry, and then in the back is a gymnasium and two classrooms. That's a little bit better view. The existing or the current main office that's in the center of the building gets renovated. Again, other miscellaneous renovations such as bathrooms and lighting throughout. Again, the additions are brick and glass to match the existing. Smith Elementary, very similar to Byrd. The same, really the same addition, just in a little bit different location at Smith. Again, the kitchen gets renovated there. There's bathrooms that get renovated and those miscellaneous renovations. So that's what's in this EL2 bid package. And again, just matching the vocabulary of the existing building.
Hello, everyone. Brian Gussman with McCarthy and Smith, here to kind of talk through the numbers that we received for EL2 for the construction specifically. I'm sorry. All good. It is not, it should, looks something like this.
Next page, I think.
Perfect. And so we're going to skim through a lot of these pages, but long story short, we solicited proposals and received them back for EL2, which is the additions for Byrd, Miller, and Smith, back on January 18th. There were a couple scopes of work that we had trouble receiving proposals from, one of which was hard tile, the other which was electrical, both of which got extended to get us a better chance at multiple proposals so we could better assess the pricing. Received the hard tile proposals on January 25th and then ultimately received the final electrical proposals on February 24th, which is why we bring this to you folks for your first review today. As we flip through towards our bid summary, which is really the culmination of all the discussion that took place. If we can keep scrolling to the first probably horizontal page. Perfect. We received a lot of proposals. All in all, just over 200 proposals individually received throughout. Some received more in the neighborhood of six or seven proposals, which is great, and some received less than that. What we have been noting over the last few years, certainly during the pandemic, is it becomes a little bit more difficult to get proposals these days, specifically cost-effective ones. So anytime we can get multiple proposals on one scope of work, it's critically important to make sure that we have a level playing field and we have the lowest qualified contractor onboard. If we click to the next tab, oh, one more back, please. Perfect. This kind of gives you, that blue bar is our net total. What does that mean from a budget to an actual standpoint? And then what you see at the very bottom is a red number. That red number, we're predicting to be about 15% over budget. That's a number we've kind of been seeing over the last couple of projects. EL1, we had a lot of good success where we were under budget and had significant savings. HS1, not so much. HS2, we're halfway through getting our proposals and then here we are at EL2 with kind of a similar overage. We spoke at length about, at the FNO meeting, about strategies. What can we do specifically moving forward, given the climate and with the world activities as they are today? It's probably not overly optimistic to think that price of materials is going down anytime soon. But from a long-term strategy, it's important to note, you know, this is a big bond project and we're really just kicking it off. This is our fourth project, EL2, the second package of the elementary school projects. So something we talked about at length with FNO is strategizing, prioritizing as we move forward. There's a lot of scope identified, and as we meet with the end users and the bond steering committee, it's really important to prioritize. What are the things that the have-to-haves? What are the things that maybe we can use as what we call an alternate, which gives you the latitude at bid day to say, hey, is it in or is it out? Those are, again, a tool that you can have to pre-price it, so you really got your best bang for your buck early on. But again, gives you the latitude to whether you want to accept it or not accept it at the end of the day. So all those proposals you see, that's throughout Byrd, Smith, and Miller Elementary's. We received post-bid interviews over the last two and a half, three and a half weeks, which we spend about 45 minutes at least with each contractor going through. There are a couple items that are notable that you'll see are asterisk, meaning they're not necessarily the low bidder. In some cases, bidders have to withdraw due to a variety of circumstances that maybe the material number was not good, maybe they didn't pick up an addendum. So it is important to note, we proposed the lowest qualified bidder, which sometimes unfortunately is not necessarily the lowest bidder at bid day, but want to ensure that the price that they suggest and are willing to enter into contract with is something that they can complete on time, not only from a cost standpoint, but labor has become a really big topic of conversation over the last year, year and a half, where it's one thing to have the right number, but equally important, if not more important, to make sure you can execute the job in an effective way and have it be acceptable at the end of the day. So with that, that is our proposal for EL2 for a first read and would be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Ms. Doo? Thank you. Thanks for going over the slides with the images and the dollar amounts. And as President McCoy mentioned earlier, this is an exciting opportunity for PCCS and our students and our community, and we do thank the community for that huge investment. And, you know, as I was looking at the pictures and reflecting on the two-years-ago process, and you think about, why did we do this? We knew there was a need, a huge need, and I look at the pictures and I think about what our kids are going to have that they don't currently have. And so that's really, really exciting. And then you look at the dollars and the inflation and the over-budget amount, so that's obviously concerning. So the question I have is, the conversations that you've had in FNO, have any of those conversations led to any changes in your strategy or current plan that would get us back to a desired budget instead of going over by, what is it, 2 million plus?
About 2 million, so not specific to EL2. So I think that part of that is that planning process. And so, right, we have our parameters of sorts, which is the bond. The bond was approved by the voters, and that's obviously what we want to stay within the realm of. But we really need to start thinking outside of the box when it comes to, again, prioritizing what are those needs from a program standpoint? We know we got those classrooms, the cafeterams that really need to become gymnasiums, but some things to think about, and you'll see that in maybe the larger scopes of work where we talk about interior remodeling. Well, maybe there's probably a little bit more latitude there as opposed to a classroom. You're not going to shrink the classroom in half, right? You're kind of limited with square footage. But not specific to EL2, but holistically, as we sink our teeth into some of maybe the larger projects that are yet to come, those are things that we're looking at that, hey, how can we prioritize that? Get the feedback from the end users, the building principals and teachers who really use that every day. What are the real needs? And again, try and isolate those alternates. So hopefully, in the near future, we get a better, you know, bidding climate. However, in the meantime, we want to make sure we're strategizing the best we can to at least have options to bring to the board and bring the FNO committee for consideration.
The other thing we're going to do is, as a result of the budget process, we're going to take a look, in fact, I just got off the phone earlier this afternoon with our demographer who does our projections, and so we'll take a look, real hard look at what the enrollment is projected for each area and each building and marry that into our work and our projects too. Because obviously, if we don't need to build an additional space, we won't build it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brooks?
No, all my questions were answered at the FNO meeting.
Ms. Chastain?
We were just talking about...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, yeah, we were talking about the same thing that you discussed right now with trying to find different alternates and planning, because maybe someday, you know, at the end of the bond, we might not, may leave some things out, you know, that we had planned on doing, but, you know, we want to fit everything as much in the budget as we can.
Thank you.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
But Ms. Piaz did answer one of my wondering, so I appreciate that. The other one that I have is, I was kind of going through, because you know that, I can't see that.
It is, it is a lot of information on a small sheet of paper.
My eyes are on the other side of 40, so they're a little older. But as I look at it, I'm assuming all those small lines are like subcontractors, people we got bids from.
That's correct.
So it's about 35 unique bidders if I look at...
Correct. Yes, right around that 40, 40 range, because some bidders, for instance, bid multiple scopes of work, so A&amp;M Construction, for instance, might have acoustical ceilings and metal stud and drywall, but yeah.
Right, right. So, right, for example, Great Lakes had three different bids, right? So I'm accounting for that. So somewhere between 35, 40 unique bidders. I'm curious about those subcontractors. How many of those bids or that we received are actually minority or female women-owned businesses?
So, in this particular case, we got the breakdown from a union, non-union perspective. About a third of them, 18, were union-operated outfits. In this particular case, there are no minority-owned or woman-owned companies. You will see in the playground presentation that we have coming up, that Sinclair Recreation is a woman-owned company. I will state that, I guess, early on, kind of in the process, we were approached and said, hey, you know, there's these great companies, we want to make sure that everybody's got the opportunity to solicit proposals and give proposals. We were given a list, I think, of a lot of the contractors that attended one of the kickoff meetings or kind of open forum meetings from a contract perspective at Plymouth Canton. The good news is, I think 90% of those contractors already on the bid list. Unfortunately, they're just maybe not the right fit in this particular case or just didn't end up low at the end of the day. But on this particular list of the low qualified contractors, there are no minority-owned or woman-owned companies.
There are zero out of everybody who submitted a bid.
I don't know everybody who submitted a bid, specifically for the ones that were awarded.
Were awarded.
So to that end, we also brought that up in FNO. COVID, as bad as it was, lent some opportunity for growth in how we approach soliciting proposals. Back in the day, it was an envelope with a letter opener and you hoped to not slice the bid in half when you open it. So now it's an online platform. So through those conversations, unfortunately, it's not immediate, but as we go through on, like, we're going to talk about EL3, which is to come, and MS1, which is to come, we're implementing that software upfront, so when we get the bid, we know right off the get-go. Because as of right now, as part of the award process, that's not a requirement for them to fill out. But given the feedback that we received, that's something that we have already started implementing on the projects to come, so we know holistically what we got.
Okay. I just want to clarify my language. I do know the difference between those who were awarded and those who submitted a bid. And I would like to see not only that we have minority supply or minority-owned companies not only submit a bid, but there's an increase in those people who get awarded contracts with this district. I don't have anything else to say.
Okay.
My questions were answered. I just want to say, I think this is very exciting. It's been a long time, like, Smith and Byrd are very old elementary schools, if anybody's been in them. Superintendent Merritt and I had children that attended that school, as Mr. Grzinski. And so it's very exciting to see, like, them getting an actual gym as opposed to, we have to eat in this and then clean it up. And then Byrd, the same thing. So it's very exciting to get these spaces for these, for the families and the children. So thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we're going to talk about the playground equipment. As you know, and as was stated earlier, we're doing a similar purchase, but we're learning from our previous summer. So based on supply chain and other things, we're moving forward to solicit the equipment piece early. in order to get that on a timely basis and hopefully install that prior to the start of school this year, so.
Thank you. Something I should have said before, and this goes for the EL two, the playgrounds, and with the furniture. You know, our process in this is that, you know, we meet with the principals of all the schools to discuss these. We meet with the bond steering committee, the administration, to discuss all of these. And additionally, the, sometimes there are staff members in the meetings, but the principals are always going to their staffs. And with some of the playground equipment, and Miller even, they had a little election on which pieces of equipment, the students did, on which pieces of equipment, so. So as Ms. Piaz said, we have put together a package that just purchases the equipment and then we'll come back with the layout to that, which we're working on right now. So all this equipment covers the seven areas of play, swings, upper elementary play structures, which obviously will cover many of the elements of play, the lower elementary play structures. And you may remember from EL one, you can see very well here the ramp. So these play structures are all barrier-free and actually allow someone in a wheelchair or with some mobility issues to travel pretty far into that play structure. And the other thing I want to point out is, these are the, these are the district colors. So all the play structures that we purchased in the district will be these colors. K one play structures, particularly at Bird and Smith, their kindergarten rooms are kind of off by themselves. And then we get into some of the individual pieces, spinners. You know, we, between EL one and EL two, there was some comments back. So we, spinners didn't go over as well as we had thought. So we introduced some more balanced items in EL two. And some climbers at each school. And then I think the more of a group climber. Obviously, lots of different ways to hit those seven elements of play. The other item that changed between the EL one and EL two is the obstacle course. While they, everybody was excited about, aren't really getting used, you know, maybe how they thought. So we scaled that back in EL two. And then lastly, you know, we want to make sure at all the playgrounds that there's these freestanding sensory pieces that children can, this is a little bit more individual play, but can still be near the other kids, but have their own item to play with, so.
Do you want to get to the resolution? Do you want to take questions on the playground equipment?
Numbers.
And I'm back. We're talking about the playground equipment. So as Ms. Piaz kind of alluded, we're taking a little bit different approach. This go-around for the playground equipment proper. As Mr. Dinkaloo went through, showed you a lot of the equipment, which is for the most part identical to what was purchased as part of EL one, with a couple of tweaks based on the feedback from principals and end users and that kind of stuff. So keeping with that thought process, we solicited proposals via Omnia Partners, which is a consortium that Plymouth Canton Community Schools operates within, that provides that game time equipment. That is the equipment that was out there. So Sinclair Recreation is that local rep. So this would be for the equipment-only purchase via the Omnia partnership agreement for Bird, Miller, and Smith playground equipment. Again, the thought behind this is get the equipment awarded earlier. So that way, we have the opportunity to get the equipment on-site a little bit earlier and try and fight off some of that long lead time. In the meantime, as drawings get finalized, as far as the placement proper of the equipment, that will get bid out at a separate time. So I will be coming back in front of you guys for a final proposal or a part two, if you will, of the playground equipment. As kind of discussed a little bit earlier, so Sinclair Recreation is a woman-owned business. And that's who we also utilized as part of EL one previously. So that's the explanation as to why you see only the one bid, given the size of the project. Again, they are the only local game time equipment supplier. Again, as well as that, all that pricing is pre-approved via the Omnia Partner Consortium. And that's all I got. So we had an original budget of about a million, or not about a million, million bucks, with a base total of seven hundred and nine thousand. So you'll see that that projected variance, again, we still need to bid out the installation portion. That is basically the revised budget of that. But that, we'll be bringing that back to you in the coming months, weeks to, for formal approval.
Mr. Doo?
Thank you. Thanks for, again, including the pictures. Love the colors, great choice of the colors and the themes. And thank you for including the ADA accessibility piece, which we talked about at the board level, and the sundry pieces. With that budget, you said that's just for the equipment. What do you estimate the installation to be? Is that within the budgeted amount?
So, odds are probably not. And the reason why I say odds are is because where we're at is we're still finalizing location. So not only the equipment, it's easy enough to say what it costs to put the piece of equipment in the ground, but that, how that associates with the surrounding under drainage, which is also a significant component of why we're doing the playground renovations. So we're estimating that it might be a little bit north of there, but we'll come up with an actual budget or revised estimate as those drawings become available so we can finalize where those dollars shake out.
Okay. And then what's the warranty and the life expectancy of the equipment that we're purchasing?
So we have a two-year installation warranty. I'd have to look, and I'll have to verify that. I thought it was a ten-year manufacturer warranty, but I will verify that.
Okay. Can we get that in board notes, please? Thanks. And did you say the students gave feedback on this?
I think specifically for Miller. The principal at Miller had solicited feedback from the principals, which also was discussed at FNO and how great of an idea that is. So I think the discussion as a whole is to maybe help nudge in that direction for some of that, that feedback back and forth on an ongoing basis. But specifically for this, I think it was just Miller that received that feedback from the students.
That's great.
The adults also had some feedback on the spinners, which didn't really go well after lunch. So I believe we moved from a group spinner to a small, small group spinner or a single spinner, so it wouldn't go as fast, if you get my drift.
Got it, got it. Well, I want to thank the kids for providing the feedback. Thank you. And the adults. That's it for me.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, it's really interesting to see what the changes are. And I like the colors in that because from the roads, you can see all the different equipment. And when people see the old equipment, it's all just like piping and stuff and you can't really tell. But when they see these large pieces and hear in the bright colors that they are, they'll be attracted to it and then they'll find out, you know, how great they are and then want their children to go use them when they sign them up for school. But I'm really, I'm really glad that this equipment is like this because when I went to school, it was just blah and dangerous. So, you know, and we were always trying to do things other than play on that equipment because, you know, wrapped up in chains and rubber belts and climbing things. It's just, it wasn't, you know, I don't know. But these are so much better. I'm glad to see it.
Ms. Chastain?
No questions. Anytime we can be inclusive to all our students, it's a great day.
Yes.
So, no questions.
Yeah. I'm really glad to see that. I'm also, I really like the idea that the equipment will be standardized across the district. It's not only going to make it look better, but then it's more equitable for all of our students. And especially when we're giving opportunities for all students to be able to play on the playground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, we're going to talk about furniture in the Learning Commons. As you know, last board meeting, we discussed the furniture for the classrooms, the desks and chairs. And now this is phase two. This is for Bird, Miller, and Smith. And it's for the Learning Commons and a few other sundry items.
Yes, thank you. So this package is Learning Commons, itinerant staff, main office at Miller, and Miller's special ed. So at Bird, in the Learning Commons, we're providing sort of three different areas, a large group instruction that will have flip-up tables and movable chairs so that space can be reconfigured and/or made into a large open space. Over to the left is more of a small group, combination small group, large group, and that's softer seating. And a couple of different areas for the students to sit. Adjacent to that's a tech bar, which is just kind of a higher seating area. And then some work, read-alone areas, and then a new circulation desk. Whoops. Did I mess it up? So this is just an example of, or pictures of the furniture. So the circulation desk on the left, the tech bar in the middle, and the loungers. So with the loungers and the tech bar, oh, and the sushi seats down below, you can start to see a couple different variety in where students can choose to sit and read. And then, again, in that combination area, a couple different areas to sit and a little bit more loungy or place down in the lower right areas to collaborate or work in a small group. And then Miller's Learning Commons. So Miller's Learning Commons is a little bit different there. It's sort of two-leveled. So to the left, again, is that large group area with the flip-up tables and the chairs, the movable chairs. We'll also see in another slide, some storage areas that they wanted there. And then they, that was also some lounge seats. So the one thing that Miller wanted was some movable book stacks. And so these don't look movable, but they do have casters on them and they'll move. So you can see the highlighted areas and they can move those book stacks for a different layout or again, to make a bigger area, if they need a bigger open area. Smith Elementary is very similar to Bird. Really, the difference being that they wanted more movable book stacks as well. So you can see the highlighted stacks there. So they've really, in that area, up and down, have created a lot of flexibility that they can move things off or reconfigure as they want to. And then in their small, large group, a little bit more of the low seats, the sushi seats, but really a lot of variety of where students can sit there. If you recall, when we were going over Miller's renovation work, they have the existing office area that is going to get turned into a special ed area. So as the renovation, we're just sort of opening that area up. And then furniture-wise, they'll have two teacher desks. And then you can see in that center area, the three horseshoe tables, or one's a kidney, two are the horseshoe, to create sort of three centers, three, you know, three stations. And then also a more movable table. And then they have one sort of small group room with tables and chairs. And again, those are flip tables, so that can all be moved out if they want to use that room for something else or have the other room next to that sort of a quiet room. So if they want another quiet, if they have a need for another quiet room, they can move that furniture out fairly readily. So these are existing spaces, but over near the, what is now the main office and are the itinerant staff. And so there's built-in desks there, but they'll have a new desk chair and then new either horseshoe, kidney, or just a rectangular table to have a small group of students in their offices doing work, so. And then one other request Miller entry had was for their English language classroom, where they have a couple horseshoes for centers, the teacher desk, and then rug and a couple other student desks and chairs. And then of the three, Miller's the one that gets the new office. So office furniture for that area. So we have the waiting room. The welcome desk has two workstations. So the workstation is built in, but we'll have two new chairs. You can see off to the right there, the waiting room, welcome area seating. And we've created sort of three different zones there so that everybody's not waiting right together. The conference room table with a credenza for the technology. There's a student area behind the welcome desk where students can wait without, you know, having to be in the middle of that waiting area. And then the principal's office and the student support coordinator office. And I think we have, so this is the principal office furniture, which matches the EL one furniture that actually was recently installed. And then the next slide is the student support. So very similar to the principal, but not with the separate table. And this is just a little bit more on that conference room, so. So much like the playgrounds, in order to kind of move this along and set some priorities and try to get classroom furniture in time for school, you know, we did the phase one, which was classroom. This is phase two and we're doing it similar. So today, I'm showing you what the plans are. We have an estimate. The estimates are under the budget. And we have gone to the dealers to get quotes. That's happening this week. And so we're hoping at the next FNO meeting, our plan is at the next FNO meeting, to have those hard quotes for this scope of work. And hopefully that will come to the board on the twenty-second, so. So Brian doesn't get to talk this time. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Doo?
Thank you. Like the others where you had student feedback, was any student, or any students involved in the selection of the furniture?
So, you know, in EL one, there was more group, you know, parents and students, staff with discussions. And then we sort of carried that over into EL two. So there was not as much, I don't think there was as much student conversation on this. But we certainly, we want to keep learning as we go through here. So, you know, we certainly- So, you know, we certainly encourage the principals, as we talk about this, to talk to their communities about the furniture. So, and, you know, I think, I think there's some, I think we're at the point where we want to do a little bit more evaluation, and so that will be a great opportunity to, because there'll be, there'll be furniture that not only the kids, but the staff can look at and sit in and give their opinion on, so.
And we did do a meeting with the EL one principals and the EL two principals, to get their feedback before we proceeded on. So, that's how you saw the change in the size of the desk and the type of chair, because we learned from our first round that, you know, K-one needed a smaller chair, so we got those 14-inch chairs. And then, the buy that you did two weeks ago, that was included in. So, we're going to go back and switch out the chairs for the K-ones for EL one, as well as for EL two, because that's what we learned from the experience, as well as get about an inch and a half smaller desk size for the rooms as well.
Great. Anytime they can be part of the process is exciting. And I mean, how amazing is that, for kids to say, "I helped pick that out," when they walk into class the next year, or the following school year. The next question I have is for Superintendent Merritt, because I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer this one. We made an investment a few years back with the Maker STEM program for elementary schools. Is any of that being taken into account as we look at furniture and storage space for all the maker materials?
So, I don't know the question offhand. We can follow up to see, because we utilized spaces off of the media center for those, but I'll have to follow up to see.
Okay. Because I know there's quite a bit of equipment that was purchased, so it'd be nice to make sure that there's adequate space and storage and tables for the hands-on experiences for the kids.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
I have no questions.
Ms. Chastain? It is so minor. But if you go up to slide six, can you go, can you go back up to, go up six slides? No, not to, yeah, not to slide six, just go up six. One, two. One more. The next one up. Okay, this one. It's so minor, but, and I don't pretend to know this in great detail, but I love the fact that we have like those rocking stools around the, like, the horseshoe tables, because I have a granddaughter who she would probably rock that thing all the way off. But where we, in the diagram, where we had the rug with the little places where people can sit in the diagram, we call the rug also a rocking stool.
Oh, yes. Somebody copied and didn't.
So, I'm sure we're not purchasing six rocking stools for the carpet area. I just want, it was just something that drew my eye, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, yes. So, and in the estimate, it's one rug, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And only six, six stools for around the horseshoe table.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Although, innovation might have a rocking stool in the rug.
It's possible. I was like, maybe it was something I didn't know about.
I want to share, even though this is not my department, is that Miller School was the original elementary school that piloted all the furniture and received student input throughout that whole entire process, when we first launched new furniture at the elementary school. So, I know, based on that, the student voice was a part of that.
Thank you so much for that.
They've got all my questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are down to action item 220354. Consider approval of resolution for bid package T3, audiovisual and other technology needs for EL two buildings. Final reading, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution for the bid package T3, audiovisual and other technology needs for EL two buildings. Final reading, action item number 22-03-54.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Members Sedu and seconded by Member Brooks, that we consider approval of resolution for bid package T3, audiovisual and other technology needs for EL buildings, EL two buildings, action item 220354. We did discuss this at the last school board meeting. Anybody have any other questions for tonight? All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Then, action item 220355. Consider approval of resolution for bid package T4, E-rate structured cabling and network infrastructure at Byrd, Miller, and Smith. Final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the resolution for bid package T4, E-rate structure, cabling, and network infrastructure at Byrd, Miller, and Smith. Final reading, action item 220355.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Chastain. Does anybody have any questions? This is the final reading, and we talked about it at the last meeting. All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. The next letter E is citizens' comments. I do not see anything in the box. So, we will move on to F, which is action item and discussion. Members Sedu, did you want to talk about your community forum?
Yes, let me pull that up real quick, if you could give me a minute.
No problem.
So, we've talked a lot about getting back into the community with community forums and conversations, and I'm excited to participate in the next community forum that we have for next Wednesday. And after today's business meeting, we will spend some time going over the slide deck to talk about how do we want to move forward with a common language of the starting of who we are, what we do, and the biggest work that we did last year, which was the dynamic plan, and just making the community aware of what does that mean from a board lens. So, we'll talk about what that common language is for us as a board. Superintendent Merritt's going to be there, and obviously, talk about all the exciting work that she's been a part of. And the agenda that I'm looking at right now really just includes an overview of the team of eight, the overall board functions, big district initiatives, including dynamic plan, policies, and programs that we've been talking about over the past year. I'm excited to engage the community in that process, so I hope that more community members can attend. And then, we'll also talk about upcoming events for the public to be more involved. And then, lastly, gaining their feedback about innovation, in PCCS being a leader in innovation. So, it's going to be an exciting opportunity and event, so I look forward to it.
And so, location, did we finalize that we can advertise?
Yes, we did finalize the, and again, we talk about being involved with the community, and we were able to secure the Imagine Theater. There is a separate community room, and I want to thank Member Wilson for that connection, so we are able to utilize that room at no cost. And I will bring snacks, packaged snacks, and water for everyone, so whoever's watching, please join us.
And where is that for people who may not be aware of?
In Canton, on Ford Road. So, we'll have the signup sheet and advertisement that I'll work with you on, Superintendent Merritt.
Perfect. And seven o'clock start, right?
Seven to eight PM.
All right.
And then, I'll also work with the Parent Council Association, so they can advertise it through their listserv.
Nice. All right, very nice. Thank you so much. That will be very exciting. All right. Did anybody have any other discussion items for tonight? All right. So, from our last meeting, which was February 22nd, our follow-up board questions were, we still have the early-middle college. A date will be set sometime this month. And then, Member Sedu asked if a PDF copy of the Business Academy textbooks could be obtained and tested for functionality. Ms. Rell will check on this request.
And then, we had one from today to add to.
We had two from today.
We have two from today. So, one is the warranty on the playground equipment. Did you want both manufacturers and installation?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then, the Maker STEM space.
And whether there, the storage space for the Maker space stem materials and equipment is going to be available in the buildings. And did anybody have anything else for tonight? All right. So, we have come to the end of our agenda, so we are going to adjourn this meeting. We will be going into a special meeting for Board Governance Workshop. People are welcome to stay. It will, however, not be taped for later. So, we will take, does anybody need a few minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll take about five minutes or so, and then we will reconvene. Thank you so very much.